Welcome to the January 28th meeting of the Placer County Planning Commission. First item here is a flag salute. Please join me in a salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay Kathy, roll call please.
Mr. Arcuri?
Here.
Mr. Severson? Mr. Sev-
Is Mr. Severson here?
You are.
Oh, didn't say here.
Mr. Gray?
We didn't hear you.
Mr. Gray? Mr. Moss? Mr. Johnson?
Here.
Mr. Nader?
Here.
Mr. Ricucci?
Here. Next item is a report from the Planning Director, EJ.
Good morning, EJ Evaldi with the Planning Services Division. I am here as well. Kathy provided you with a, the list of meeting dates for next year, calendar dates. The regularly scheduled second and fourth Thursday of every month. We're going to maintain that schedule, no special meetings this year right now. Not sure when we're going to be going up to Tahoe. We had that discussion just a little bit ago. But likely towards the end of March and probably a couple of times, you know, beginning of spring, late spring. Any questions on the calendar?
Sorry.
No problem. The next Planning Commission meeting is February 11th. We have just one item that a decision has to be made on, that's the Shaffer Mill subdivision. It's a subdivision and CUP modification regarding a condition of approval. We're also going to have an update on Tahoe area projects similar to what was done at the Board of Supervisors on Tuesday. Then February 28th, the second meeting of the month in February Auburn Creekside. We're going to be accepting comments on the draft EIR. You should all have a copy of that document. So the- Twenty eighth. Correct? I have my list of dates. If I'm- Twenty fifth. It's right in front of me.
He wanted to see who was awake and he found one person.
Just it was a test. So you all need to be around the 25th and I'll try to remember it's not the 28th. That's it, that's all I have unless there's other questions?
Any questions of EJ? Okay, thank you EJ. Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda and I noticed at the end of the meeting we have no items on the consent, for the consent tonight, so or today, so we'll move on. To public comment, the time reserved for every, at every meeting for members of the public to comment on any item that's not on today's agenda. So we only have the one item on the EIR, but if you have any other things that are on your mind, you may come up and address the commission at this time. Seen none and we'll move on to, I think it's five after, our first timed item, I think is, we're on time here, it's 10:05, it says the park at Granite Bay draft environmental impact, public view and comment. And I'd just like to read the first two sentences on our staff reports, it says, "Conduct a public hearing to receive comments on the draft environmental impact report for the park at Granite Bay project. The opportunity to discuss the merits of the project will occur at subsequent hearings on the project entitlements." I know that's always hard to separate, in fact even for myself, to separate the comments on the EIR, how adequate or not adequate you might think they are, and the project. The EIR is written for the project, so it's sometimes hard to kind of separate those, but if you could, that would be helpful. And also, we have a sign up sheet, if we could get people to sign up so we can get your name and provide you any information later on. And also, just, we just, this is a public hearing, but your written comments can be received anytime up to the, up to the time limit of the draft EIR, so that we would encourage that. If you have written comments, either submit them today or either email them or fax them to the staff. And thank you. Now we'll have our presentation.
Good morning Commissioners and everyone here. I'm Lisa Carnahan with Planning Services Division and as you said, this is a hearing to take the opportunity to allow public comment on the draft environmental analysis. We are presently in the 45-day public review period which began December 31st and will end on February 16th. And as you've said, we encourage people to write in with their comments. Any comments that we receive will be responded to formally in the final EIR. In the audience is Christina Erwin, the environmental consultant, and the applicant's representatives. The environmental consultant. And the applicant and his representatives.
Maybe I should interrupt for a second here. We are recording this today so we get your comments, if, in case you don't send them in in written form, that we get them accurate. So we'll try and speak up clearly when we're at the mic and that way our recorder here can have an easier time anyway, not an easy, easy time, but at least a little easier time of getting all the comments written properly. Thank you.
Okay, and I'll try and speak up also. The public notification for the draft EIR went out to the groups that are shown on the screen here. They went out to property owners within 300 feet, they went in to anybody who wrote in on the notice of preparation, they went to state and federal agencies, public agencies and the public libraries in the area. This is the location of the site in the community plan of Granite Bay. The whole area is the community plan for Granite Bay. The site is here in this little island area. They call it the island area because it is surrounded on three sides by the city of Roseville and an incorporated Sacramento County on the south. Here's a close-up of the project site location within the island. As you can see, it's west of, it's hard to tell on this, but this is Sierra College Boulevard, this is Annabelle Avenue, Eckerman and Haskell Way. The community plan designation for the island, for the majority of the island area is rural low-density residential. And the zoning for the upper island area is residential, single-family, combining agriculture, combining building site with a minimum lot size of 40,000 square feet. This is an aerial of the project site and its surroundings. From this aerial you can see the subdivisions within Roseville and here's a little closer look at Annabelle Avenue and the other areas, Woodbridge subdivision down here. The proposed project includes 56, uh, single-family residential lots on 16.3 acres with lots, lot sizes ranging from about 7 to 17,000 square feet. There would be a mix of two-story and one-story homes. There is a gate right here, the community would be gated along and would have a single entrance from Sierra College Boulevard. There would also be an emergency vehicle access entrance for emergency vehicles only coming off of Eckerman. Although the subdivision would be gated, it was, it's proposed to have the gates open from dawn to dusk to allow the general public access to this .8 acre park, which is a part of the project and is meant and intended for public use during the day for, and for recreational soccer practice. There would also be a 15-foot landscape buffer along the north, west and southern lines. And there would be landscaping and sound walls in this area here for lots 1, 2, 55 and 56. The sound walls would wrap around in order to provide noise attenuation for the residents. A little bit of a timeline, back in November of 2014, it went to the MAC as an informational item and then in February of 2015, the notice of preparation was published. And at that time it was an 84-lot subdivision and a little bit larger park with a passeo and community rose garden. And based upon input that the applicant received subsequent to that notice of preparation, they have decreased the amount of lots from 84 to 56. And they, there's no longer a passeo, but they have the community park still available. Requested entitlements for this project would be a general plan, Granite Bay Community Plan Amendment from rural low-density residential to medium-density residential. They'd also require a rezone from residential, single-family with a combining ag and a 40,000 lot, 40,000 square foot lot minimum to residential, single-family with a combining building and 7,000 square foot lot minimum. They'd also need a, excuse me, a variance to increase the maximum lot coverage on only those lots that are 8,000 square feet or less. From normally the zoning for that, for residential, single-family allows 40% maximum site coverage. They're requesting a 50% maximum site coverage. And again, that's only on those single-story lots that are less than 8,000 square feet. They're also looking to have approval of a vesting tentative subdivision map. So vesting tentative subdivision map. Scope of the draft EIR took, analyzed aesthetics, air quality, greenhouse gas emissions, hydrology and water quality, land use and planning, noise, transportation, traffic and circulation, and utilities and services. One of the areas of controversy raised during the secret process was the issue of compatibility with the surrounding neighborhoods. And although the lot sizes, as you can, this slide is a little blurry, but you can see that the lot sizes are comparable to those on the eastern side of Annabelle Avenue and those around in the city of Roseville. In order to minimize the impacts of the project, the visual impacts and help with the transition of densities from the project to the medianly adjacent homes, the applicant included a 15-foot landscape buffer easement along the whole perimeter on the north, west and south sides. And additionally, here and here where the sound wall wraps around, the landscape palette will include evergreen vines to try and help with that, the visual aspects of the sound wall. Additionally, in order to reduce visual impacts for the existing homes which are here, you know, along the perimeter, there's been a deed restricted, single-story homes that have been listed on these lots that have stars on them. Other single-story lots will be interspersed among the rest of the lots, but these would be deed restricted and they would remain in perpetuity, single-story. Traffic from, was also analyzed, there was a traffic study done and coming, this is the entrance and exit from the proposed project. And so there would be a right-in, right-out only. And anybody coming out of the project and who wanted to turn north would have to come down to Old Auburn, make a U-turn and go back up. According to the traffic study, there would be no change in this intersection in the level of service. And in addition, there would be a left-turn pocket in from the northbound lane going into the project site. Drainage was also looked at. There would be a, two vegetated drainage swells here which would flow into this water quality detention basin. And then from there it would go into an underground vault and exit the property in the same spot as it does currently. With the sewer, the majority of the wastewater would flow out to Sierra College Boulevard. There have been recent discussions between the city of Roseville and the county. Originally, it's hard to see here, but all of these ones in this area have the grinder pumps that would go to a force main and then it would gravity flow out to Sierra College Boulevard. The most recent discussions with the city, they would prefer and the county agree because grinder pumps are not as preferred as gravity flow, to keep these seven properties on gravity flow as well as the Basrai and the Novaresis who currently now, gravity flow over to this manhole here. They would, these seven would go through an easement here and go to the sewer manhole there. So they would, so there's been a little bit of discussions there to, and the, this property and this property would still have easements to that sewer line. This one would be abandoned and it would come into the sewer, into the street here.
Lisa, quick question, those middle lots then are not high enough to be gravity-fed over into the far corner? Is that correct?
These ones on the northwest, right, they're, the land slopes from this side down gently towards this side naturally, so they would have, these ones would need a grinder pump in order to, and a force main in order to connect with this gravity sewer line here which flows out to Sierra College Boulevard. In the draft environmental impact report, you'll find that the, with the implementation of the mitigation measures, there were no residual significant and unavoidable impacts that were, which remained. Draft EIRs always include an alternatives analysis. In this instance, they did a no project, a, an existing zoning and then a reduced density alternative. This is a view of the existing zoning, it would allow for 16 lots which are about .9 acres each. There would be no park. They would still require, these ones would still require grinder pumps to allow them to then gravity flow to Sierra College Boulevard. There wouldn't be any drainage swells or detention basins or landscape buffer with this alternative. And it, while the environmental impacts would be reduced in all cases for this or most of the cases, it wouldn't meet the applicant's project objectives for this project.
And those objectives would be what?
The objectives to create a diversity of home, home styles, to provide a park that's publicly accessible and it allows recreation.
Not just to increase the number of units?
Right. This alternative is the 40-lot alternative, which is again, a reduced number of units. It would keep the perimeter buffer. It would keep a lot of the facilities that are with the proposed project. It would not have the larger park though. And again, the majority of the environmental impacts would be reduced with this alternative. However, it would not meet the one-project alternative or objective from the applicant, which is to provide the public park. It would still have a tot lot, however, the tot lot would be for residential use only. And that concludes my presentation on the project. There'd be many opportunities for the public to gather more information, to provide input, like the chairman stated, at any given time during the public review and comment period which ends February 16th. The public is welcome to provide written comments. There's going to be a Granite Bay MAC meeting next Wednesday, that's just going to be informational only. We won't be accepting formal comments on the draft EIR at that meeting, but it is a time for them to gather more information on the, on the project. And like you said, anybody who submits written comments, they will be responded to in the final EIR. And then in the future, there'll be subsequent meetings, action items at the Granite Bay MAC, there'll be a Planning Commission and Board hearing where the public can comment on the merits of the project. And anybody who wishes to can submit comments to our Environmental Coordination Services at the address listed above and they can email us. And with that, I'm, I'll leave it to you to open it up to public comment.
Any questions for Lisa while she's here at the podium? Not that we can't, not that we can't call her back, but do you have any questions at this time? Lisa, let me ask you one question, is there any, is there a need now for the, for the environmental consultant to make any additional comments before we kind of open things up?
No.
Okay, but they're here in case to answer some of our questions.
They're here.
Okay, thank you. Does the applicant's representative want to make any comment at this time? And seeing a shaking of the head back there, no. So at this time then I'll open it up to the public for comments and on, and problems or issues that you have, maybe you have with the EIR. And while this is our only item on the, on the agenda today, so we have sufficient time, you know, we try and keep our comments as, as, as short as possible and also maybe on the subject, if you have one or two of the impacts that you feel aren't, weren't properly addressed, maybe zero in on those and that would help us prepare the final EIR. So who wants to be first? Anybody want to be first? Oh geez.
No comments?
No comments? Nobody, nobody wants a comment in the EIR? And we got to have a comment after my little speech, come on. You're leaving me hanging here.
My name is Victor Beckett, I live on Haskell Way, south of the property. I'm sharing like over 500 feet with this proposal.
And your, where's your location of your property?
So, okay.
Let's see, there we go.
On the south?
There's a pointer up there, but, there, oh somebody, there, somebody's pointing it out for you, okay, right in there. There you go, there's a little green dot there, okay.
We moved up here like, we bought like five years ago, we moved up like three years ago. We have some young, we are a young family. And the reason we moved up here because of the environment, I mean, the rural feeling and the quality of life that we didn't have in the Bay Area where we lived in Ridwick City and Palo Alto. So we, we paid a premium for it to enjoy this lifestyle. And we, we bought, we thought we contracted with Placer County, that this is the current zoning and Placer County will be upholding the law, maintaining the zone and protecting the codes of this empty lot behind us. This empty lot is surrounded from four directions by bigger home, bigger lots like ours. Basrai here who lives on Sierra College, Dr. Basrai who lives in Sierra College has a big house. So it's from four directions, it's, it has the same one zone, rural zoning. Understand this is like an orphan of Granite Bay Community Plan, but it's still under the Granite Bay land use. And one of the segments there is about that no major development should be allowed that will have the traffic go on a major artery like Sierra College. No subdivision should be allowed that have the entrance going to a major artery like Sierra College. In this case, Sierra College has only two lanes. We're already suffering as is right now from traffic turning right, trying to make a U-turn on Sierra College. So I have, we've gone through the EIR, that the company has been hired, I think this is an ordinary thing, that been hired by the developer. We think it's skewed and very biased in terms, even though there's a glimpse of window of hope that when they say the best environmentally accepted recommendation would be to maintain the current zoning, which we think is the best option. Simply because all the factors discussed, the first factor would be the topography of this lot is, cannot accommodate such high density or medium density. Then we'll need this grinder pumps going here, if any of these pumps break down, I don't know who's going to be accountable later. The developers were still their properties, they're going to take their money, walk away. They have this limited liability, legal structures to protect themselves. The only people going to be left would be us, the tenant, the neighbors and Placer County. So I'm expecting, you know, problems of privacy. I'll be, instead of me sharing the, the line, my fence with two neighbors, I would be sharing with seven or eight or nine. If each one of these neighbors wants to have a party every three months, they have walls between them, going to block the noise. It's not going to block the noise to me, I'll be having Coniston parties every weekend. And it's going to be 10 against one.
That's not very good odds, is it? So you're, you're, just kind of summarize here, some of your concerns are the traffic analysis on Sierra College and maybe the noise issue with a lot of the-
Privacy.
Yes, and the noise, and the noise issue, those are the two major concerns right now.
The major concerns, the traffic, the topography, the inconsistency with the neighborhood and eventually in the future, liability, I mean, it's going to be disputes, it's going to be problems. First accident happened in Sierra College because of this major traffic going in and out. Who's going to be accountable for it? I mean, and also just, yeah, I mean, that's pretty much it. Thank you very much.
Could you, could you sign in please there if you would? That way we can get an additional information to you. Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else in the audience would like to comment on the adequacy of the EIR? Yes ma'am? Name for the record and then you can sign up.
Hi, my name is Janice Freeburg and I live on the Sacramento County side of this project, but it does impact our, our way of life also. I live in Woodbridge Ranch where I live on almost four acres of land. And the traffic already is horrendous. You go there at 5 o'clock at night and try to get from the nearest grocery store to my home and you're in traffic. And there's cars coming at you in all different directions. The intersection of Old Auburn and Sierra College is not an adequate intersection to have that many U-turns being made at. It feeds down to a single-lane road on both sides. It's not a very wide intersection, it's not a very good place to be making U-turns for approximately 200 more cars if they're all going south. Maybe they're not, but maybe they are, I don't know. Also, I'm concerned about the drainage. You cannot equate drainage on a one-acre parcel and their hardscape to that many houses. There's much more hardscape in this plan that is being proposed. And I know drainage, and it's already got some low areas, drainage is a concern. You cannot not change the drainage, not enlarge anything to the current lay of the land, which is what I heard in the ERA. That, that's crazy, that makes no sense to me that you could have that drainage be exactly the same as it is now by mitigating it. Water runs where water wants to run, we all know that. We've tried to change it lots of times and it doesn't work. And those are my, those, you know, the commute time will be increased, the traffic will be worse, there's possibility for flooding and that will affect the houses around there which share my quality of life because they're rural properties. And that's really all I have to say at this time. The ERA doesn't really address a lot of the everyday life issues. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience wish to speak at this time? I knew I'd get some people here if I got started encouraging them. Maybe I shouldn't have, I don't know.
Sandy Harris, Granite Bay, and Commissioner Ricucci is absolutely right, it's very hard to separate the project from the DEIR. It's very hard to separate the project from the D E I R. I spent many hours reading it. I think the company who did it made it sound like a wonderful project, but the purpose, the, the project objectives, that park, the size of it is really a joke. It's not even as big as my backyard, and I don't know who's going to be in control of it, who's going to monitor who uses it. I think the county parks, they usually have to sign up the different groups using it. It'll be closed at dusk, and when, you know, people want to use it. So that goal is really unattainable, I think. Under the land use, I don't think the E I R was, the D E I R was, it's inaccurate suggesting that this meets the goals of the, of the first goal of the Granite Bay Community Plan, which is to keep a rural atmosphere. They suggest by putting a 15-foot barrier, a landscape barrier around it, that this will make it more rural and be part of a low-density residential. I don't think that makes a good transition between higher and lower density. And they say, one of their goals is to provide a mix of density in, in Granite Bay, and we already have 3% of our well-laid-out Granite Bay Community Plan that was just readacted in 2012 after much community input, and we have areas set aside for different types of land use. And this is set, this truly is an alley within an alley, and when I think about it with the wall all the way around it, my first thought is Folsom Prison. That is a gated community, and that's what this is. And as far as it being an aesthetic view to the entrance of Granite Bay, I can't agree with that at all. It suggests that there's going to be a 15-foot buffer around the property, and I think when I look at the pictures, that it's within the walls of the parcels, and I'm not sure how that's going to be done because the backyards, the houses are only 20 feet from the property line if it's two-story, and 10 feet if it's one-story. And if you have a 15-foot landscape buffer around there, that basically is the whole backyard of most of these houses. And who's going to monitor it to make sure that that 15-foot landscape buffer stands there forever? Because people are going to put sheds out there, they're going to want to put playyards for their kids, maybe a pool, if they can get that in there. So I'm not sure if it's on the inside of that fence, who it's going to shield. It just doesn't make sense to me. And then it says in the E I, V E I R, that they're going to have sloping berms on some of the properties. Are they sloping into the properties around the parcels? Or are they within those walls? And if they slope off into those yards that are on the other side of the wall, how far will they slope into those yards? And how high will they be? Because then they're going to have a fence on top of that. And so if the berms are three feet and you put the six-foot fence on it, that's a pretty high barrier along the property lines of like Victor, who's going to have seven or nine properties on his. He's going to be looking at this big high wall. So I don't know how that's, that's going to make it more acceptable to the community. I think their alternative to met all the environmental issues, the only thing it didn't have was the park. And I don't know why that park is so important to this project, because it's really useless as a public park. Maybe it lowers the developers' park fees that they have to pay, I don't know, but it's a very inadequate-sized park. I had lots and lots of comments on it, but since we can't address the specific project, and it's very hard to separate it.
No, I know, but have you?
I just, I just feel, if I lived in these developed lots around it, I would be very upset with a project like this, especially if I bought there knowing that it, the zoning on it. And as you, Lisa said at the beginning, it compares this with the houses along Annabelle Avenue, which don't even abut this property. They're on the other side of it, separated by a road and other properties. So it's unfair to say this fits the Annabelle size. You make, you should make it fit the properties that are around it, and it doesn't fit the Granite Bay Community Plan with the goals and policies at all. Thank you.
Thank you, Sandy. Did you, do you have your comments on the E I R in written form that you can transmit over to the staff so they can...
Written, but I wanted to see, this, this process is new to me. I've never had a hearing before on a draft E I R. I just wanted to come and see what it was about, and listen to some of the comments. And if you read the comments too, the, there's some really good ones from the neighbors who live around there.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else in the audience?
Hi, my name is Jeff Keith. I live, also live in Woodbridge Ranch, and my property is adjacent to Old Auburn Road, so in close proximity to Sierra College and Old Auburn. My big-picture concern with a project like this is that it would set a precedent for the area. For instance, right now on the corner of Sierra College and Old Auburn, there's a, I believe it's an eight or 10-acre parcel that's for sale. Right next to that on Old Auburn Road, there's another 4.7-acre parcel that's for sale. So I can see some other developer coming in with this as a precedent, buying both of those properties and saying, here, let's go high-density again and get more properties in there. I think it's, you know, uncharacteristic of the area. My, my lot is one acre, as are most of the, the properties in Woodbridge Ranch, and the properties around here. And I'm just concerned with some of the high-density projects that have been approved, like the Tim Lewis down at the end of Old Auburn Road, what's going on with Standard Pacific in Granite Bay on Sierra College and Eureka Road. There's some medium-density, I think, there, the, I think it's called Greyhawk Three, which is very high-density for a small parcel. You know, I'd, I'd rather see projects like Rockwood, which is just over the Sacramento County line on Sierra College. It's, I believe, six acres or, or eight acres with five, five parcels. Recently, I believe they called it Woodbridge Estates. It's off of Old Auburn, across from Woodbridge Ranch, where there was two-acre parcels, I think there's five houses, you know, and that's in that island. I think that's more appropriate for future development, if not just leaving the big parcels they have there already.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Could you sign in, please?
Thank you. Thanks for giving the opportunity for this hearing. My name is Karanjit Basrai, K A R A N J I T, last name B A S R A I. And I live on the, this property, 9480, right next. So you can see, I'm still pretty calm and quiet. I'm trying to keep my emotions in control. It goes back to the simple question. I mean, I can, you know, everybody's sitting here, and, you know, everybody's much more knowledgeable than me. I'm, I'm a physician, work in Sutter Roseville, so I don't know the details about all this environmental report and all the things. I'm just asking the simple question, like a simple man. I've been a resident of Granite Bay for almost more than nine years, and I used to live in a, you know, development on Swan Lake, nice home, pretty, pretty, pretty good. And, you know, things changed, and me, my wife, and our children thought that, you know, we, we want to stay in Eureka School District. This is where my eldest son went to school, and my younger one is in, you know, high school right now. And looking around the properties, they're where we can have a little different lifestyle. The lifestyle we picked up is like an open space, you know, my, my lot is about two and a half acres, and we can have animals, we can have some, you know, agriculture land, you know, raise, you know, whatever we want to do. And, and, and that was two and a half years ago, and when, when we started talking to the owner there, and that was my main concern, me and my wife's main concern, that what will happen to this big open space? And I came to the same county. I asked them the same exact question. I said, I understand, this is a two-and-a-half-acre, you know, this zone. They said, well, you don't need to worry. This is zoned, you know, 40,000 feet, 40,000 square feet, like almost 0.9 acre. Excuse me. I came to the county, I was told the zoning around this is almost one acre. The empty lot will be minimum of almost one acre, plus minus.
Yeah, 40,000.
Yeah, 40,000 feet, square feet. So, you know, fast forward, you know, within one year, you know, some, you know, some developer came, and he has this, you know, all these things going on with the, whatever, they have their own arrangement with the owner of this lot and all the things. And now, basically, they are bent upon changing the whole lifestyle of the people living around. They are going back to the Annabella, Annabella, Annabella. Well, we know Annabella is there since, I think, 1950s or 1960s. Those people lived there, they have their lifestyle, they wanted to live in those homes, and they are fine. But the, all the properties around this area, they are minimum one-acre lot. So just, just, just try to imagine, I, I thought, you know, it will be like two or three homes around my property. Now I'm looking like eight to nine homes around my properties. And, and, and these people who are coming to these, you know, these homes, they're not, they're, they're not, you know, thinking about there will be a cow next to, next to his home, and, and, and the hens and the cocks are giving a morning alarm at four o'clock in the morning. I have the animals, next to me is Paul's property, and that's the reason I went there. I want the animals to be making some noises in the morning. I want the voice of the tractor, or whatever he is doing, because this is the lifestyle I choose. My son wants that. My, my nephew and nieces come to my home, that this is the, this is the, the property. But the, when, when he's going to be developing all this place, all these, you know, homes, think about, I, I can understand, he's going to come back with, yeah, it's, it's written in the deed, and everything is there, there's agriculture land and all those things. How I'm going to be dealing with eight neighbors who is mad at me when, when I have a burn day? I'm, I'm, I'm burning a, you know, heap of, you know, you know, my, my agriculture stuff over there, and, and then, then, then they are, they are going to say, why you are burning here? Now why your animals are making noise now? So, I mean, that, that's just an aesthetic thing I'm talking about. The next point I want, so, we, I mean, me and all the neighbors, we are very pro-growth. We want this area to be developed, but it should be pleased, developed, maintaining the zoning of the area. So that, that's, that's our main, main concern. As far as the traffic is concerned, if you can see, I'm, I'm coming from the, the home from the next door, going, going on Sierra College, you can make only right, you can't make left, you have to make a U-turn. I'm concerned about my exit and entrance. Now, I, I was, I was reading through the E I R report, there will be de-accelerating lane. Well, I'm trying to go into the lane, the other people, like, you know, of course, if you, more homes you have, there will be more cars, so whatever is the average. So people are de-accelerating when I'm trying to accelerating. So I think that, that's, that's an accident to happen. It's already a, a, a big, big concern for me, whenever I'm trying to enter my home, I have to make sure, you know, there's, you know, not a big truck following very closely, you know, giving the right signal to enter my property. So now some people are, you know, I'm, I'm entering my property. So, so that you guys can understand, there are two homes before there's an entrance to this new project of Sierra College. So that, 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 that's, that's one of the biggest concern, concern I have, you know, about the traffic. And then, of course, making a U-turn from the Old Auburn Road. So I will respectfully, you know, request everybody that, that, yes, I, I will totally support this project, and, and we are for this project if it's done maintaining the zoning. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else in the audience care to comment on the draft E I R?
Hi, my name is Paul Novaresi, and I live on the four acres in the far top there. I have some definite concerns about the E I R, about the road usage of Eckerman Road, which is a private road owned by the people on Eckerman. It is not owned by the developer. They're using it as an emergency access road. The road is about 13 feet wide on an average that we maintain the asphalt on. It's been asphalted by us about four years ago. It was a gravel road up until then. So the road is deteriorating faster and faster as we drive on it ourselves. I'm also concerned about the water. They said that they were going to take the water from all those properties and force it across my property. Forcing it across my property, I have an 18-inch pipe that I put in per the, I asked for that to be done so I could keep the swale, but cut down the amount of mosquitoes and cut down the amount of water. Well, now they're talking about putting a water or draining water onto me year-round through my pipe at 18 inches, when he's going to put a 24-inch pipe in. So my concern is this, my pipe is going to eventually road out. Who's responsible for that? Am I having an easement on my property for this pipe, for his water to come across my property, when he's making a 15-foot berm all the way around? Why does he have to force the water back on me, then? It's taking away the natural swale when he puts that berm in. My other concern is the berm he's putting in. My road is at the level it is now, and he's going to put a 15-foot berm above my road. What happens when that berm starts to road onto my road? Who's responsible for that? He's also got power and my sewer, which he says he's going to move my sewer, but he doesn't have anything about the power that goes to my house that runs up that easement road also, where the three telephone poles are. No question in the E I R about the tele, or power for my house. You know, my cable, my internet, and my power is all brought to my house from those telephone poles. Don't see anything in his E I R saying where he's going to do with those telephone poles, how he's going to remove them, and how he's going to gain me back power. So then my sewer is connected in that road, and he's going to put a berm on top of my sewer line. What happens to my sewer line if it gets damaged? I'm responsible for, at that point, for the sewer line. Who's going to fix it? I got a 15-foot berm, I'm going to have to dig out with a fence to get to the sewer line that he's putting down the road. It doesn't make any sense to have this. We love the plan, the second thing that he wants to do, or his second agenda with the 16 homes, that's what the area needs, that's what the area would look the best in. If we did anything in that area, that would make the area just what it's supposed to be. I have cows, I have chickens, I have goats on my property. That would be a nightmare to have, I'm going to have two, four, about nine neighbors against my, my property, where I'm going to have, so I'm going to have nine neighbors that are going to say, my chickens are too loud, my goats and gals are making too much smell, or they're, or they're running around causing dust or whatever. It's just going to be a nightmare. We bought this four acres in this rural area for that reason. We wanted to be in town, but we wanted to be a rural area. That's what we got when we bought this 15 years ago. 15 years ago, we tried to develop ours into four lots. We were told by the, by planning that you can't do that. You're 3.9 acres, you can't build four lots, you can't put four houses on your property. You have to go down to three. And they didn't even give me an option to do more than four, they just said, nope, that's it. Didn't even give us a question about if we could do anything different, or ask if we could want to do something different. Three was the maximum. So we're just concerned that when you put this many homes in a rural area, and as you can see in the map, when you're looking at the, the Roseville side, that's Roseville, that isn't Placer County, that's Roseville. When you look at Annabelle, all those houses were built prior to 1975, and they were all split prior to the MAC, or prior to the Granite Bay Planning Commission deal. We all said, we want this to happen as one-acre lots. Those people were way before that. So those lots were all split before we had this, our master plan community. You know what I mean? They, so there, everything was there as a master plan community now to stop that kind of a problem, because it is a problem. Annabelle has no sidewalks on it. It's less than 50 feet wide. So now we're trying to force all those cars in a case of emergency down a 13-foot-wide road, up to a 20 or 30-foot-wide road to get them all out of there, and there's almost 255 houses that are in that area now. So we already have a, we already have between 3:00 in the afternoon and 5:00 in the afternoon, a 20-minute wait sometimes to get out onto Sierra College. And you can't even turn left at that time of day. Same thing in the morning. We also have a, a bus stop for kids that gets off right there on the corner of Sierra College and Annabelle. What's going to happen to that bus stop when those kids try and get out of there, when you've got all these cars now being piled up because of his deceleration lane and acceleration lane? It doesn't make any sense to us. So we're just really concerned that the E I R didn't, didn't check that it's a private road, it's not owned by the developer, and it's not owned by Placer County, and he's forcing water across a piece of property that's not, shouldn't happen. I mean, who would want someone to force water across their property and then have to maintain a pipe? The pipe erodes, and I've got to maintain it. It's money out of my pocket for this development, for this developer to make a ton of money on. It doesn't make any sense to me. So I'm very concerned that the E I R did not go back and check all those, down, get down to what it's supposed to be, brass tacks.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Sign in there. Anyone else in the audience? We have one more, at least. Maybe more.
Hello, my name is Elaine Sacco, I live at nine-five-two-zero Eckerman Road. I've been at that property for close to thirty years, and the reason we bought that property was for the rural feel of the area. We're on one acre, and we are kind of kitty-corner to the proposed development. I'm not against the development of that parcel, we just ask that it be according to the Granite Bay Community Plan and the Placer Community Plan, that is one acre, one house per acre, to, to have that feel of that rural feel. This is a nightmare, this is just a nightmare. Eckerman is a private road, as Paul was saying, and we are not going to sign off, none of us on Eckerman are going to sign off our easement for this development, and the EIR did not, they said that they, they used that Eckerman as an emergency road, but we're not going to sign off on that. So, there's, something else is going to have to be done with that. But I'm all for this project if it, if it is just sixteen homes on one acre. And also, Paul mentioned the drainage. That whole EIR drainage thing is, is not a model, it's not going to work. There's, we've had flooding down there, not in recent years, obviously, because of the drought, but it floods at the end of Eckerman when we get a lot of rain. There's just no way that there, they're going to be able to take care of all that water. And I'm concerned about getting out of, out of my house, down the road. The traffic is another main concern. You cannot make a left on Eckerman, I mean, off Annabelle onto Sierra College at certain times of the day. It's just backed up. And all these cars coming from this development, it's just going to be a nightmare. And that U-turn is not going to be able to, is not capable of taking all those cars. It's just going to be awful, and I don't know how the traffic people said this was going to work, it's just not. So, I just encourage you to please go with the original plan of sixteen homes on that parcel, not opposed to that, definitely opposed to this. Thank you.
Thank you. Sign in there, thank you for signing in. Anyone else in the audience? Sandy, I know you've already spoken once, but if you want to make one more comment, since we do have only this item on the agenda, and it is a-
I left one thing out.
We have another person, too.
Under aesthetics, they have pictures of existing, the way the landscaping looks now, and how it would look in the future with this buffer, but it didn't look much different to me, the before and after. And I think it would be helpful if they would impose the rooftops in those pictures also, so you could get a better idea of what the visual impact would be.
Thank you, Candy, for that additional comment. And ma'am, you want to make a comment?
I do.
Okay, name for the record, and you can sign in after.
My name is Fay Williams, I live on Eckerman Road. In fact, I live right off of the end of this road. I have an acre and a half, I have a pond on my land. I've lived in this area for probably forty years. I've lived in the house that I'm in right now for twenty-four years. This has always been a casual, pleasant, semi-rural community. And if we take what is being proposed here, it's like going into Roseville, picking up one of those housing developments, and dragging it out here and propping it down in the middle of our home, our, our place that we've been enjoying life all these years. Not only that, but this berm that is going to be built to buffer, I don't know what, is going to be right there in front of me, as I go out my front door, I get to look at this pig pile of dirt, and I'm not real thrilled about that. One of the things that bothered me in reading this EIR is that several places, the, whoever wrote it, said that they were interested in improving the area, and I don't see how this improves the area. It may improve their pocketbook, but not the area. And I think anything else that I might have commented on has already been said by the other neighbors here.
And, well, if you think of something else, you can always submit it to that address and email address that was on the screen there earlier.
You know, I did. I, I sent an email, oh, I don't know how long ago, six months ago, and it did not show up as, or even be referred to in the EIR, some of my neighbors' submissions were, mine was not.
Uh-oh.
I sent another one in on the twenty-fourth of January, and I'm hoping that that did arrive and that it's being looked at.
Okay, maybe staff can check that out to make sure it did come in, because computers are computers, and I've sent stuff off myself to various people, and sometimes they didn't get it, and sometimes it was my fault, I'd hit the right buttons, and sometimes, sometimes the system just don't, don't process it properly. Thank you, though, ma'am. Sir?
Good morning, my name is Stan Sacco, I live at nine-five Eckerman, nine-five-two-zero Eckerman Road.
Could you could speak, bring the microphone a little closer to you there, and that way-
Sorry.
There, thank you.
Stan Sacco, S-A-K-O, at nine-five-two-zero Eckerman Road. And wanted to touch on a couple of things, same thing that this gentleman had talked about with regards to this development not setting a precedent for future development is ridiculous. You know, I mean, the EIR states the change would not be growth-inducing, so it would be limited only to the project site, would not result in the construction of additional housing. That's a flat-out ridiculous comment. If they've got a crystal ball that's better than mine, I need to have them start picking lottery tickets for me. This will definitely lead to future construction, there are a lot of large, open, I don't know if Lisa can put up that overview lot, there are a lot of large parcels out there that are just primed for future development, just like this. If this thing goes through, you can see all the large parcels out there. It is absolutely a precedent center. Specifically with regards to the EIR, some of these things, policy one-point-B-point-six, they're stating it's consistent with the size of the development lot, developed lots along the eastern portion of Annabelle Ave. It's a very specific comment, the eastern portion, it's not consistent with the western portion, it's not consistent with anything else in that entire island community. It's a very small, little, specific comment, addressed specifically for them. Policy one-point-B-point-eight, the county shall discourage the development of isolated, remote, and or walled residential projects. Everything in their analysis response talks about although the project would do this, although the project do that, it's a, they're talking about berms, they're talking about sound walls, they're talking about fences, it's a walled project, it's an isolated project. They're also saying the project would be consistent with goal three-point-one-point-one, which states the character of the Granite Bay area is exemplified by the rural, general rural environment. They're requesting a rezone for higher density. It's not a rural development based on this. As such, the project would contribute to the sense of community desired for the area. Yeah, that's why all these people are here commenting about why they don't like the project. It's not what we want, it's not desirable. There are various issues going through the Granite Bay Community Plan, talking about the rural nature, the rural character. Once again, this is not consistent. When you look at consistency, I live on an acre parcel there. When I look to the, the west of me, there's one parcel, I got one neighbor. I go to the north, there are two parcels. East and south, there are one parcel each. You look at the map here, he's got, Paul's abutted by eight future proposed lots. The doctor has eight or ten, depending on how you dress that up. The properties along the bottom, four lots are abutting, those properties, seven lots for another one, seven or eight lots for another one. The project is completely inconsistent.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for also going through that, the staff report, and, and actually highlighting specific environmental issues there, that, that helps staff, I think, with the responses to it. Thank you so much. Yes, ma'am?
Hi, I'm Mariana Beckett, and I'm with Victor Beckett on Haskell's, just south of the project. I pretty much agree with what everybody else has said, most of what I wanted to say has already been said, although regarding traffic specifically, I feel like the EIR put a lot of emphasis on intersections, and just, you know, a paragraph or two about weaving, i.e. how people are going to get over to make their U-turn. And I feel like there should be definitely some in-depth study about exactly what's going to happen when that number of new cars are going to need to be trying to make that U-turn that the rest of us are already having trouble making. And especially as it relates to the, the homes trying to enter or exit on Sierra College directly, and that, that bus stop that's also in that general area of the deceleration lane. And another huge area that I don't think was adequately, adequately addressed was the storm drainage issue. It's just not logical to create so much hardscape and then somehow say that the drainage issue is going to be improved at the end of this project. So, I would just urge, please, in a place where we already know that there are flooding issues, it's well documented, even inside the EIR, that there's flooding issues here, there's seasonal swells, there's, there's already these vernal pools that they've looked at, we know that water collects there, and to, to allow any kind of variance, or plan amendment, or rezone that allows, allows more hardscape than what it's already supposed to be allowed for, is just asking for problems with the drainage of the storm drainage, of the water and the storm drainage issue there. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience at this time? Well, everybody's encouraged, after people get up, then they're still coming, aren't they?
Good morning, I'm Debbie Martin, I live at nine-five-zero-two Eckerman Road. I'm in agreement with Mariana in regards to the drainage issue. A question I have is, where's that water going to go? Does the EIR talk about what the effect is on us? You know, they talk about mitigating the noise in lots fifty-five and fifty-six from traffic, but what about the noise for us? We live out in the country, in the middle of suburbia, and we're there for a reason. We like to garden. I have an autistic son who can't be around a lot of people. We're there for a reason, everybody is. I canvassed the neighborhood, including those lots on Annabelle, when this project started, and we're all there for the same reason, and it's affordable. Young families are moving in all the time because they can afford it. This project, it's huge, it is like a fortress, I can't see that it's heaven for them or heaven for us. We're going to be looking at berms, they're going to be in an isolated community, which we have plenty of. And mainly, the EIR doesn't address the environmental issue of water. Now, mind you, this is a project that deals with, you know, water within a suburbia, but we're already having problems with water with Volsom Lake. You put another hundred-plus people here, where's our water going to come from? I mean, I'm already worried about that. So, mainly, though, you look around, and our world is moving towards a place where people want to have land, we want a garden, we want an area where we can kind of cultivate something that's being taken away from us. Now, all these people are moving into Granite Bay from the Bay Area for this strict reason. So, that's sixteen acres, you know, sixteen homes, one per acre, I think they're looking more for that. You look around Granite Bay, there's plenty of houses for sale in areas like this. My friends from Granite Bay come to my house, and they love the peace and quiet. Now, mind you, that's not in the EIR report, okay? I can talk about the noise, I'm worried about the noise, the traffic is no doubt a factor. Question with the traffic, when was the last time we did a traffic study? Was it like two years ago? Because over the last two years, it's gotten, it's compounded. It's, it's, as everybody's said, it's very difficult. I worry about trying to get to the U-turn, there's going to be more accidents, our kids get off at that bus stop, there's already trees that block that. So, so, noise, drainage, the, the mere fact that it is an island, and not only is it an island, it's going to be more like a volcano, right? Because we're going to have berms. And so now, it's just going to be this mound, okay? So, it's really not compatible at all with the Granite Bay Community Plan, at all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sign in, please, thank you very much. Any additional comments?
Well, this is up, Jeff Keith again.
Just one more quick comment.
Quite a dis pointer here, or?
Well, a pointer, I think somebody was-
These are the two parcels, I'm talking about that.
Yeah, I kind of, we kind of figured that, because you were in Woodbridge below that, so.
Yeah, and that, so that would, you know, if I was a developer and that got approved, I'd be looking at that. I live right here.
Okay, could you come back to the microphone here if you're going to make additional comment? But I, we, I think we understood where, where you were-
So, my other concern is not the U-turn, but those people making the right-hand turn onto Old Auburn Road. It's already, in the twenty-four years I've lived there, gotten a lot more traffic because of the development of Granite Bay, and I can see a lot more people coming out of that and going right than making the U-turn.
Okay, thank you. Any new people? No, no, new people, that's why I said, because we normally, we normally don't, well, people haven't made comments before, is my criteria, okay? No, it's good that we do have a little more informality today, because we do just have this one item, and it is the draft, so we're trying to allow in a little more discretion. Is there anyone new that would like to make maybe new comments, or comments that haven't been made yet? Okay, I'm sorry I discouraged anybody that wanted to get up with that last comment, but I'll close the public hearing at this time and bring it back to the Planning Commission for questions of staff. But I, first, I would like to compliment the people that are here today, and the people who made presentations, and no one applauded for anybody else, and that was good. So, thank you so much for, for your restraint, because I know some of these things do get quite emotional. So, commission members, go ahead, Wayne.
Lisa, I have a question for you that was brought up, and I may have missed it, it may be in here, but because there is some agricultural activities going on around, and that was brought up by a couple of people, is there any conditions that are going to be put on some of those lots that are on the outside that would be against those properties, stating that they're aware of that activity going on, that, that there is agriculture? And I know the county has a policy about the right to agriculture. So, is that being addressed with this development in any way?
Yes, there is some, one of the people mentioned, there is a, a measure in there that it requires the homeowners association, the CCNRs will clearly state that the surrounding area is, is a combining agricultural area, and that they recognize that that allows agricultural operations, you know, animals, smells, things, so that they will be noticed of that fact before they purchase a home.
So, they can't make an issue of it at some future point?
That doesn't mean that they couldn't make an issue, but at least it notifies them.
Okay, 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 listen, the public hearing has been closed, but I think we all got the gist of that. I know you can warn people, and sometimes that doesn't work, quite work out. Thank you. Any other questions? Is that the last, is that your concern? Any other questions of planning commissioners?
On the, on the issue of the, of the drainage, I didn't see anything here from the, from the proposed development.
Compare it to what it's already approved for with regards to how much drainage would get increased, especially going out that corner towards this Eckerman. Was that done?
Could you repeat the question?
How much more is the drainage going to increase based on this density as opposed to the already-approved zoning?
Okay, so you're asking between the alternatives versus the applicant-proposed alternative, or the, the main project? And that is addressed in the alternative section qualitatively? That, I'd have to look it up to be sure, if anyone has it off the top of their head, feel free. It is in there, though.
Okay, thank you. We'll look for it, then. Any other questions of commission members of staff? And if not, I'd like to ask staff if they have any closing comments. One would be the, the EIR period, comment period closes about the middle of February. How soon after that would be the comments coming out and, and the final, final EIR out, out on the streets, approximately?
Do you want to respond to that? Or I can respond to that. So, comments are due February sixteenth, once we receive comments, obviously, it's going to have to go back to the EIR consultant to address those, you know, staff will review, be reviewing the administrative final, and before we come out with the final, so, you know, it could, it could be, you know, thirty days and beyond after that, February sixteenth. So, you know, it could, it could be, you know, 30 days and beyond after that February 16th date before a final EIR is finished.
Thank you. Any final comments by Commission Members or Staff? If not, I guess that's our last item, our one and only item. Because of consent, we already dispatched that there wasn't anything on it. So I'll adjourn the meeting, and thanks, everybody, for coming.